All right, I'll call the meeting to order. Everybody stand, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think that was right. We can, we can do it up here.
Okay, there are a couple of requests for additions to the agenda. So. Within the Highway Department, correct? And then I need to add a bill that was received late to process. It's from Lewis and Clark Behavioral Health Services. It was for an examination of somebody that was taken in on mental health hold. It's in the amount of $225. And if you approve that with the other bills, we will actually write this check in the middle of the month.
Move, we approve the agenda with the additions.
We had, uh, executive session.
Oh yes, there is a request for an executive session.
Urges it on here.
Nope, it is not. And that's for personnel reasons.
Same motion.
Okay, we've got a motion in the second to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, to facilitate, excuse me. Review the zoning ordinance, comprehensive plan, cover page, documents that are included in your agenda. It would request that you recess as the commission, then you can call it back to orders, planning and zoning commission.
So moved.
You wouldn't, don't even need a motion.
No, you need to.
No.
We just declare them?
Call a recess, then call the other meeting to order.
Okay, well recess as the, uh, county commission and convene as the planning and zoning.
So we've, we met with Eric Singer again a week ago. And you guys have in your hands, or your review, a draft zoning ordinance and a draft comprehensive plan, along with the cover page and the table of contents. Those are there. They are out on our website, so, um, the public can view them. They are in draft, draft form. This is for you guys to look at, make any recommendations, or anything like that, that you would like to, um, as we work through it together as a full group now.
So you have the, um, what you have here is where you guys feel it. You're comfortable with what's there, I guess. You don't need, other than maybe unless we have some other input.
I guess that's up, it's up to the rest of the board to put in their input. This is what man, Dan, everybody in the group come up with.
With, uh, some great assistance from Eric.
Yeah.
Yeah, he did. Yeah, he culminated, pulled stuff from our current ordinance and then implemented it into his format and, and those types of things. So, yeah. He did a very good job, so I commend him for that. Did you go to sleep?
It's a lot.
So, what is the, like, public hearing process? If this is approved, show to him.
Right, yep. So you guys, as the planning and zoning, after you guys review it, you guys could yourselves make a recommendation to the commission to, uh, accept in our passage or whatever.
To approve it, yep.
To approve it, and then that, that would then, um, kind of jumpstart the whole, we are gonna have a public hearing and all of those things, and we have to have that. And then we'll have a 20-day, right Doug? It's 20 days after.
After they approve it.
Yeah, after they approve it. Yeah, okay. So that's how that would go. So that is just all dependent upon you guys and your review. Uh, if you guys have any recommendations or any changes that you guys would like to see. Uh, I am waiting on just a, and just one item from the state's attorney for him to just kind of review the violations and penalties, just so that he's aware of what the new verbiage says compared to what it is in our current ordinance and just, because he's the one that ultimately would have to defend any one challenging our ordinance, so he needs to just, Eric wanted him to just review those and just be sure that that's, the verbiage was okay with him. Um, I am currently working on the official zoning map, um, trying to figure out some different parcels that may, may or may not be just zoned agricultural. We're looking at maybe zoning a couple of them as commercial slash industrial. Very few parcels. I have a total of 12 of them right now, and they're all within, they're right on the outskirts of the city of Miller's boundary, and they're, but they are like, commercial. Would not be like, obviously, egg-tegra. It's got egg in the word, so that we would leave that zoned agrit- agricultural. Um, there are things like the Speedway, um, maybe Domlin's, I mean, uh, Do Drop Inn, Andy Cannon's place there, Brad F. Manning's building there, that's kind of a commercial, could be used as commercial. These are things that we can decide together. This isn't just ultimately up to me. Titan Machinery is, is outside of city limits, but that, cross that off. So then, they, they made that.
It's in the city.
That is in city limits. And then there's some parcels that are part of Builder's Cashway that are within the county, and they're not within the city, but they're right on the backside of it, but I would, I would think that those would be considered commercial.
So if we had, if we did that, we would have to adjust the comprehensive plan too, then I assume, right?
Um, I'm just working that right now, the official zoning map, like, you're talking about naming those areas. Um, I will have to double-check that with Eric if he would list those parcels individually, or if it would just be like a referral to the zoning map, kind of thing. Um, anything else?
What's the?
Go ahead.
I don't know, say advantage or disadvantage of doing that. I mean, it's obviously all zoned agricultural now. And realize.
That would be up to you guys. If you guys just want to leave it the way that it is, the advantages would be that.
The, I mean, yeah, the main difference between commercial, industrial, and agriculture is there's, um, some more stringent, uh, provisions on commercial, industrial, like, uh,
The setbacks.
Yes, setback, like, and then like glare and dust control and, um, they're just, it's
Yeah, we can.
More restricted. Yeah, it's, it's more restrictive, um, versus, yeah, egg is just
Just.
A lot more open. I mean, a lot more goes.
So it would, it would open that window for if we wanted to, you know, if somebody wanted to expand in those areas, we would have a little bit more.
Little more, little more say and control over that, yeah.
On what happened?
Because really, if you look at the, the ordinance, uh, between egg and commercial, industrial, there's basically the same permitted uses and conditional uses listed, um, so that, I mean, they'll still have to come to us no matter which zoning, uh, district they're in. They still have to come to us for the same conditional use stuff, but just with the commercial, industrial gives us a little bit longer list of things to ask for.
And this is just something that Eric said, if we wanted to do it, we could completely just leave it the way that we want. He just told me to kind of look around and see what, which ones that maybe we could call those commercial slash industrial areas. And then ultimately, I would say that I can present it to you and just say, I have Darren marking those. He's doing like a layer, just to kind of, so you can see where they're at, versus just me naming them, you know? You can kind of look at the map and go, well, that kind of makes sense, or it doesn't make sense. We should just leave it the way that it is. So. Completely your guys' call on that.
Um, some discussions started about, uh, the drain tiling projects and draining into our right-ofways. Is that something we should include in this ordinance or just?
I don't know, you talk about.
Yeah, we, we, uh, discussed this when, when we were going through, Luke and I and, um, Jamie and Eric, Nickog, and and I asked Eric, because he sees a lot more counties to see what they're doing, and, and he pretty much said, nobody has, uh, nobody has included any sort of drainage, whether it be tiling or anything, as far as, as far as a conditional use, not that we wouldn't be able to, but there'd be really no precedent for it, I guess, at least in his region. Um.
Which way the water runs is a really sticky subject.
Right.
Included in zoning, is it a drainage problem? Is it a problem?
Yeah, and I, like we already have discussed, he said any of the counties that do regulate and do it through a drainage ordinance, so that's all they.
Kind of going through my list here. Um, so then, like, currently, we're gonna, him and I are still gonna, kind of, still work on like an administrative manual, just kind of put that together. That's nothing that needs to be, uh, facilitated through this group. It's just something that I can use in the office as kind of a, as a, instructions on how to utilize this new ordinance and those types of things. So.
Yeah.
Yep. And then he's also working on like a updating the building permit form and those types of things. That's basically it. It's just gonna. Got questions? You can certainly ask.
Try and read the next three pages.
You know, you could do it like a, an assignment or something like that, yep. Three pages a night, maybe.
And I think too, we discussed the timeline on it, and you already asked about, you know, the process, uh, if we didn't expedite it, thinking, we're thinking maybe three meetings it would take to.
Three to four, yeah. After today initially, and then you guys take a look at it. This was just to open it up so that you guys could see it.
Yeah.
Um, and have discussions about it. Ask questions.
Feedback.
Yep, give some feedback.
Good. Should be made known that the links are right here. Read it.
Yep. The links are out there. They're on the website, so you can certainly, anybody can certainly take a look at it and make any comments and so.
Do you want to put it on the agenda for the end of the month, or just wait till January?
Wait till January.
Okay.
No.
That's all I have, basically.
Thanks, Jamie.
Yep.
So we can just, I can just adjourn? Do you, you don't need planning and zoning anymore? You're.
That is correct.
Okay, we can adjourn as planning and zoning, and we'll reconvene as the county commission.
Okay, Commissioner, old business. Harland just wants to give you enough stuff for that pickup. What's that?
Careful.
Uh, good afternoon. Just want to update you guys on what's going on with pickup. The pickup is in Omaha, either today or tomorrow. It'll be in Iverson's and Mitchell mid-month. And be ready for pickup after the first of the year. Uh, currently, the topper, um, they haven't got any information on whether it's gonna go up yet or not. Last year, it went up 300 bucks. Uh, usually happens around December 20th. What he told me, he said, right now he hasn't heard word, but last year he got the email on the 20th, and that's when it went up, so. Uh, 300 bucks, last year, the year before it was 300, the year before that it was zero, so. Wish to could give you a better answer, but I'd pass that on. This weekend. What's that?
Can't buy it.
Get it?
Is there a topper tariff that we need to get?
No, I don't think so.
If there's any chance of it going up, I just, why the west, I'll just buy it for that many dollars and have it available for when it's ready.
Yeah, it's not a huge amount, but it's 300 bucks.
Yeah.
And it'll, we, we don't have to pay for it until after the first of the year too, but we can nice lock the price in. It'll take four to six.
I bet it's not gonna go down.
No, nothing does. Uh, the deck system for the back, it's gonna go up a hundred dollars. Um, that'll go up at the first of the year. There again, not a huge, uh, increase, but that I would probably have to pay for this year, because it'd have to be credit card purchase, so. Not sure how that works, if that can be taken out of the car budget or. That would be up to you guys, if you want me to purchase that to save that hundred dollars or.
As well. Is it really budget for it? Accessories and stuff?
I did not budget for accessories this year, but I do have some room. I'll have to look and make sure.
It also has a Van Watson's fund, a neighborhood management fund. We would just have to do a supplement here in the market.
Might as well.
And then I did call Dan. There was a repair that needed to be done to my current pickup. The transmission had the acetylene go bad, which was about 1,800 bucks. Repair that. Had that done here in town with, um, Todd Beckin before transmission. It's repaired and back in service, so.
I signed off on that one, and it's half of that built to Buffalo County?
Yes, I think.
The total was split in half. It's a half-hand cut.
Yeah, I have the line item for each one, so I split it evenly because we travel down there, so. All comes out of the same bucket, but at least we could track it, see that we split some of those costs. That's all I have. I guess if you guys have questions for me.
Good, thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, the next item is a, uh, the Resolution 25, 2025-14 was the original budget resolution. The Department of Revenue did their review and found that our levies were almost entirely accurate, so for example, if you look at the resolution form that each of you has, the amendment has the suffix A behind it to distinguish it from the original. The original general levy stayed the same as did the county road and bridge levy. The, um, having a brain fart in here. Secondary roads. Secondary roads is the one that changed. Secondary road opt-out did not. So the secondary roads went from .535 to 564. So that is the only change on that resolution.
It went to 64?
564.
Mine chose 535 and on 14A.
How about the one on paper? You should have a paper copy as well.
535.
535? Well, I mean, I'm. Yeah, that's 535.
All right, let me reprint those. We'll come back to that.
Change this to what?
.564. Wait a minute. It was 564. It went to 535.
Well, then it's right. It's right. Boom.
Yes. I even wrote a note that says, "Old numbers" in red. Okay, so I would request that you give due consideration, and if you feel so inclined, to adopt Resolution 25-14A.
So moved to adopt Resolution, what'd you say it was?
14A. Second.
Got a motion in the second.
What was the change, then, and why the alteration?
Um,
You know?
They didn't really say, but there's usually two reasons. One, we may have hit the cap in the original levy, or gone over it, um, or it was just a math error.
They gave you the, the number that you, I mean, they'd said, this is what you have to give. Okay, he's curious.
They seem to be looking hard at property tax stuff these days.
Yes.
Even if it's a thousands of a cent.
No, that's a good thing. Okay, got a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2025-14A. Is there any discussion? Do a roll call. Uh, so do we, or this one, we have to sign this one, or?
Each, there's enough copies for all the purposes that I have.
Palmer.
Aye.
Eshenbaum.
Aye.
Wernsman.
Aye.
Strasburg. Jensen is an I. Resolution passes.
So this is where we have to, like, I guess.
And just sign it.
We'll just sign one. Each, yeah, we'll have to pass it around.
Sign it. Five, five copies.
Oh, you need all five copies, right?
I'm just glad they're not carbon copies.
What do you need, Kristi?
Dan, you just take this one if he needs five. Start them all the same.
I just know mine's easy, because I don't know. Think about it.
There's your next one.
Yeah.
They even got some new parts, it looks like.
It did. It used to be worse.
That's supposed to keep them liquid and get them inside of the rig.
Oh, some kind of air liberator or elevator.
I think everybody signed that one. I got your folder in the back. I forgot to bring it out. And are these all?
Okay. All right, you might remember the discussion about taking any of the money that is generated for secondary roads and putting it in a signed line item within the budget so that it can be held over for purposes that originate in that area. So that's what this resolution does. Oops, wrong one. Let me go back. Or is this the one I numbered wrong?
That's right.
There we go. So basically, the resolution says that the auditor is instructed to assign any and all residual funds in the road and bridge fund arising from revenues of the secondary road, and provide for a line item in the road and bridge budget to illustrate the balance from one year to another.
So, Bean Harrison is our only unorganized township. This works, find the way it is. Do we want to name Harrison in this resolution in case another township would decide?
We'd probably have to drop a new resolution if another one disorganized, but we can certainly add it.
I, it's my opinion that if, um, if, uh, another township would decide to declassify themselves unorganized again, that we should have a refund for each township.
I agree.
So we keep that opt-out.
And it's absolutely transparent.
Yes, transparent. We can keep it easy to track, but as for now being, we only have one. I will move to approve Resolution 2025-22.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Do approve Resolution 2025-22. Is there any additional discussion? Do a roll call. I don't have my sheet with me. Palmer.
Aye.
Eshenbaum.
Aye.
Wernsman.
Aye.
Strasburg. Jensen is an I. Resolution passed.
The next one is the contingency transfer. This is comes from Commissioner contingency, and it goes into other budgets that are seeing a shortfall. Presently, those are, now, I gotta give you a caveat why the sheriff's office has the X. He's expecting $60,000 to come back for the camera project. If that happens before the end of the year, which we're hoping that it will, this would not be needed. So that's why it doesn't have a value in it. So conceivably, you would be approving this as an unknown number, but if it does not come in, if the grant doesn't come in, I'll just bring this back at the end of the month and do it as its own, because there'll be others. Okay? Um, as far as jail and inmate services go, $5,100. Corner, $5,500. Mental health, $1,000. I can already tell you that you did some bills for mental health, and I have the one that I asked you to pop, so that's gonna come back into the month for even more. But it's not that it should be unexpected that we're doing this, because we trimmed back a bunch of those budgets with the thought in mind that we would offset whatever shortages through the contingency fund.
So you feel it's always better to do this earlier, I mean, not early in the year, but December 1 knowingly, they can do it again. You just assume, kind of, keep up with those.
Yep.
Instead of waiting because it's early last minute.
Correct.
I see no reason to not approve it, I guess.
What is our total, uh, Commissioner's contingency fund? Is it 150,000 over budget?
There is $30,000 allocated for vehicle purchases and 150 assigned to general operations.
I move to approve Resolution 2025.
I'll second it.
We've got a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2025-23. Is there any discussion? So the, I mean, the unknown amount for sheriff, but then later you state 11,600 for the sheriff, or you're saying?
Plus whatever the sheriff needed. I think to be safe, you could just cross out.
Once you get the actual resolution, if we're, if we're just cross that, word about sheriff, just play that by ear.
The first part there?
Yep.
Okay.
The unknown part.
That move?
Yep.
Okay, we'll do a roll call. Palmer.
Aye.
Eshenbaum.
Aye.
Wernsman.
Aye.
Strasburg. Jensen is an I. Oh, or Resolution passes.
Shane, that's state money, right? Comes from Burn through ACI? Okay. Yeah, so that could literally show up any day, because they just wire us the money. Um, as far as budget supplements currently, nine one one services will need a supplement, so that'll be money coming out of the nine one one fund, going into the nine one one operational budget. That's because the surcharge changed, as a result, the amount we pay, the city of Huron changed. And so next year, that shouldn't be an issue, because that budget was built using the new revenue. And then the Miller Terminal, we had an overpayment, that's a mistake on our part, of three thousand two hundred twenty-one dollars and six cents. And so to bring that budget back into balance, we would have to supplement it unless the state gives me consent to do it a different way. So you'll be seeing that at the end of the month. Auto supplement. If if the grant money comes in, I need permission from the board to automatically supplement. It doesn't require a hearing, just an action of the board.
Okay.
So if you approve that and that money comes between now and the end of the month, that meeting, then I'll just take care of it. But I do need your approval to do that.
Entertain a motion to that effect?
Second.
Everybody, we've got a motion and a second to approve the auto supplement of the grant funds for the sheriff's office. Is there any discussion?
This is that same sixty thousand.
It is.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, you have the SDSU 4H memorandum of understanding. And Ann asked about being here for that, so if you're okay, I'll send her a text. I'll go get Dan's folder. You guys can play a quick game of scrivage.
Scrivage.
Scrivage. You can scrivage with your cribbage.
That'll give you a chance to review that if you haven't.
Talk amongst yourselves. Does this mean you're? Does this mean you have been the same here?
This memorandum? Yeah, I don't remember.
I mean, it should probably be now being through the twenty-sixth year, I guess, but it hasn't been passed, maybe it's way late.
So if you want, while she's on the way up the stairs, you can take action.
She's fast.
I was expecting them to talk more about it. Do you want to give them a brief synopsis of what may or may not have changed?
While I grew it, I didn't see much that had changed from year to year, so basically it was pretty much do whatever they tell you to do. Um, the one thing I I did have a problem with this year, and I talked with Jay, with Dan about it and Doug. Um, this year, they, the Director of Extension left to go somewhere else. And the, or no, the Director of Extension retired, the Director of 4H went somewhere else. So we have an interim Extension Head and we have an interim 4H Head. The interim 4H Head was my supervisor before the, the big change. And um, she's a lot different than what Dr. Tanner was. Um, so this year, they implemented some, um, mandatory review paperwork that I was supposed to submit. And I'll be quite honest, I didn't submit it, because, um, my theory is if I'm going to be reviewed, everybody that works for the county should be reviewed. Um, and plus, I thought it was a gigantic overstep on their part, because that's state entity and I'm a county employee. So I didn't submit it. I submitted the county snapshot sheet, which just highlights various points throughout the year. Um, and I submitted, I tried to submit the federal, um, equal rights paperwork, um, or reporting stuff for that. Otherwise, I didn't submit this stuff. Um, so when I read through this one, I was kind of expecting it to have something on there about the reporting stuff. It doesn't explicitly say it, but it did say that we have to do, um, where did they put it?
Under section five, maybe?
Yeah, performance annual performance review of the county hired staff. Right there. And they wanted to do that with the new regional youth educators doing that review. Um, when they hired the rise, was what they call them, I was under the impression that they were not going to have supervisory capabilities, but now it's looking more and more like they are going to. So, um, that's the person, the, um, before it was like Oakley, can't remember what his last name was. Um, what was Oakley's last, Perry. Oakley Perry was the, um, liaison between the, um, director and the county to help with stuff like this. Um, when he left, they broke it up into four different regions, so now we have a regional youth educators, what they call them. So, that part has changed. So, um, I'm not real sure how I feel about that stuff. And I don't know how you guys feel about it, but that's been a change. I kind of wondered when Rosie took over as the interim head, I kind of wondered if that was going to be coming. Um, so there's that. But otherwise, I think most of it is still the same of do what we tell you to do and you'll be fine.
I guess to be, signing that we're going to do it, we should do it, and they don't really have anything to say over it. If they simply don't sign it, then we should probably follow it anyways. Why sign it?
If you don't, if you don't sign it, we don't have a 4H program, that's what.
You're not following the thing either, though, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
If they say, well, you're not doing that, then they may also do the same thing. So, I guess to me, probably follow it. Not that they're gonna, we're the ones paying the bills, so what are they gonna do?
Like I said, I guess my theory, my sentiments was if I'm going to be reviewed, then if I say why I have to, I'm not eligible additional, so I have to have me in the word field.
I don't know what the difference is.
I've never had one, so.
I mean, I think this year was a matter of, there was a they gave us some pretty short notice on, um, coming in and demanding what they wanted done and, um, it was a little bit maybe the, the way it was being asked for and not necessarily what.
Well, and, yeah, um, Dr. Tanner sent out the email that he was retiring the day after State Fair got done, or that he was leaving. And so Rosie came on and at our annual conference at the end of September and I think you got the that was the first time we'd been told anything about it, and I think you guys got the email Thursday of that week. We got done with conference on Wednesday, so.
I mean, yeah, I do agree, I mean, if it's the language in here is interesting, is that, I mean, it doesn't say anything's required, it just says this will happen, so I don't know. They put enough vagaries in here, though.
Yeah, it's pretty vague, I don't know.
So anyway, otherwise, like I said, that's, that's the part that.
But we certainly want a 4H program, so.
Yeah, so then you get to sign it, but that was, that was what I noticed was a change, otherwise pretty much everything else hadn't changed on it, so.
Any questions?
Sorry, I thought I shut that.
You need a motion or? I'll make the motion. Sign it. Second.
Got a motion and a second to accept or approve the memorandum of understanding between SDSU and Anne County. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
The sheriff will get sent.
Yep.
And a copy will be kept.
Perfect, an email to me.
Okay.
Thank you, Ann.
Gosh, there's so many signatures.
Hello. Um, the only thing I got other than the budget stuff, does anybody have any questions on the budget stuff? You know, the jail budget was quite a bit over this this year. Um, this last month, we had a juvenile in for thirty days, which is
What, what was it again?
Very expensive, I imagine. Three to four, yeah, three to four hundred dollars a day, so. So that was a big one. We also had somebody in steady from July till now, so.
Is that the juvenile stuff? Obviously, like adults, we go back and try to reimburse ourselves or for them, right? For juvenile, obviously, if I can't do that, I assume?
There is a reimbursement program. Some people argue that generally responsible for fifteen hundred dollars, but that's in the restitution sections of the law. Otherwise, it says you can file a lien against the parents, so that's what we'll do.
Any chance we'll get anything?
I don't know. If you don't try, you don't, mate. Thank you.
Um, other than that, Deputy Waldrop has reached his six months post-certification. So he's up for a seventy-five cent raise. Go from twenty ninety-one to twenty-one sixty-six, so I'm just requesting you guys approve that.
I'm sorry, what were we?
Just say yes.
Move for the raise.
Get him a stamp.
All right. For these.
No, for the rate, oh, for Waldrop.
Okay, now I'm with you. Got a motion and a second to approve the wage increase for James Waldrop. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And then, yeah, we just need our.
Need motions for the housing agreements.
Housing agreements, yep.
Do them all at the same time?
You can.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the housing agreements.
Beetle County's not in there yet, what theirs?
Nope. They will, yeah. They just, they all do it on their own time.
So we don't, do we send to Charles Mix?
Yeah, every once in a while.
Cheaper.
It's cheaper, so longer stays, we try to. We get a lot of flack from the, um, lawyers and stuff that are in Beetle County, because they can't visit with their client as often, so most of the time, it's Beetle County, but if we have a long stay, we'll transport to Charles Mix.
Any discussion?
Why can't we require these court-appointed attorneys to communicate by Zoom and not be targeting this mileage?
It's a good question.
You can ask the judge about that. I don't think you go or. I mean, to be honest with you, there's people getting court-appointed attorneys that shouldn't be getting court-appointed attorneys, but the judge signs off on them, so we're stuck.
I know, and then, and the point of it is with, with the availability of, um, video communication, why, why are we paying mileage for these attorneys to?
There's some that won't even allow people to appear from jail by Zoom that should. And speaking of court-appointed attorneys, I saw an application the other day that said, yes, I do have family that can loan me the money for an attorney. And it was still approved, so. And they fill out, they don't even fill out their complete applications, they just scratch, no, 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 no.
Then no follow-up?
There's no follow-up, no.
Too much, just too much backlog, is that, I mean, it just takes you on.
They don't look at them, they just grab the stamp.
How far over is it?
Court-appointed attorney? It's not.
It's not over?
No.
But we also budgeted more than we had, so.
Okay.
Topics.
Curious how that's going. It's not insignificant.
No.
If I'm not mistaken, I think the commissioner from Yankton County told me they were a quarter of a million dollars
Is that a, is that a dare? I can do better, I guess.
I'm just, just speaking back and there back.
They have the whole county in prison.
You probably have people lining up to.
Okay, uh, got a motion and a second to approve the housing agreements. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's my turn.
It's your turn.
Okay, so, um, I kind of ran an estimated cash balance sheet. That one from last month was off quite a bit because of all the property taxes that came in um, with the road and bridge tax. I'm not used to getting property tax. Uh, so, as you can see, our cash revenue report as of I think that would be October first, sorry. Would be, was it one point seven five six million, um, sitting pretty comfortably. We have six hundred and seventy thousand that I need to bring in to twenty twenty-six as our beginning cash balance, so I'm placing that as a reserve for that amount. Counting up the November invoices due to be paid in December and the estimated payroll for November here. Yeah, I'm thinking our cash balance is sitting at six hundred and fifty-five thousand.
Those November invoices, one of the big ticket items.
Pardon?
One of the big ticket items in that November invoice.
In that November, that is three hundred and three thousand Brownlee. Yeah. Was the big ticket item there. So that was the final payment on the material he crushed in the Martin Moss pit. So we are paid up on that bill. The rest of it, we'll see repairs. I don't know. Did you guys have any questions on the invoices you signed for the checks, or?
You have anything big and anticipated in December?
Not really, um, knock on wood. The, uh, snow, snowfall is going to probably determine that. Hopefully, hopefully, we won't have anything disastrous, but.
Snowfall doesn't determine, wind determines.
You got a point, you got a point. It's doing a pretty good job. They're, they're back out there today saying, gosh, yeah, we need to go back out and plow. Um, we worked our way up, we've been working on Harrison again, so that, that expense report isn't going to be precise. So if you look on the back of this page, you'll see, um, I estimated high on payroll, just to make sure that there was nothing that was going to surprise us, I guess. Um, also, so you'll see November expenses is what our, our guess is there, our estimate. And then you can see I estimated for December. So what I did is I took what's remaining in our budget and calculated that we will have a hundred and fifteen thousand or so left in the payroll budget with this year being so, so eventful with the transitions. We ended up being fairly over on our S. We ended up being fairly over on our estimate for payroll. But I thought if we can take that hundred thousand or whatever, transfer it into the materials budget line, we should be able to make a three hundred thousand dollar payment on the material we just purchased to Brownlee and get that much off the books. Then we should probably be able to pay him off next year with the remaining amount.
Probably need equipment.
That is, that is not, no, including any equipment. I've been looking for chip spreaders. We've been having, our pneumatic packers have been kind of struggling, our broom is struggling, so, so the stuff we use for chip sealing is, is struggling. I've been keeping my eye on the markets, trying to find stuff within our, within our budget. And I haven't seen anything persuasive enough to make me want to jump on it. The chip spreaders that I did find are too narrow, they're fifteen or twelve-foot spreaders. We need a fifteen, we'd like a pneumatic one that spreads that's adjustable, preferably, so we can take a wider path and fewer passes. But, so we're keeping an eye on, on the equipment lines for that, equipment sales. Brooms and packers, I, I do have my eye on a broom that might, might be okay, I think it's in Florida. But, um, but that's where I'm looking at that. Do you guys know? I'm starting to think as far as purchasing pickups. We're just gonna have to start looking at dealerships, seeing what they have, I've looked at surplus. It, it seems like surplus doesn't have a lot of like F-three-fifties or if they do their flat beds, which I don't think that the flat beds that we have are doing us a service very well, I feel like that, that space could be used better if we were able to keep what we needed in the back without fear of it sliding off. But, um, so I'm kind of keeping my eyes open for something with a normal bed or a service truck type bed, which I know there's stuff out there, I don't know, if you guys see some, give me a holler. But, but anyway, so we're keeping our eyes peeled on that, now I'll shoot you guys a call if I find something that I really feel is gonna do us, do us good.
So if we, Eric, go ahead.
So you're not requesting that we move this money? No.
Well, I was thinking, so this is the twenty twenty-five budget. It's the twenty twenty-five payroll, which we have one month left on. That hundred thousand is what I figure we'll have left at the end of this year. So if we move that into the materials line in twenty twenty-five's budget, we would be able to spend that and not be over budget in the materials, if, um, I guess if indeed you guys do want to hang on to that, and next year, we can do some, I, because the budget washes out at the end of the year, right? All the lines...
The budget does, but the money don't.
Right, the money don't, so the cash balance will still be in there if we don't spend it.
Which, like we talked, I mean, the, the budget amount is available and the cash is available, and then, so the money is in the
Right.
account, I guess, how much time, I mean, there'd be no way we could execute this plan at the end of the year meeting if we...
Would we be able to do that at the end of the year meeting if we wanted to transfer?
What's your concern?
We don't really need to transfer it though, do we?
It's just the reassignment is all it is.
It's already, it's already there.
On one line and move it to another.
So you just have to approve a resolution or whatever?
Not even that.
No.
Not even that? Oh, sweet, I didn't know it was that easy.
Now, the advantage is, instead of just spending it and letting those budgets go in the negative, it gives you a history of what you're actually spending on materials. So you can see it, use that when you're planning.
Right.
We've done it with other budgets.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah. I mean, we're, we're already sort of...
But I get what Greg is saying about the...
You could approve it up to a hundred, and we could do fifty, now one fifty in the future.
I guess that would be, it's not a concern, I guess it's just where my, my mind went, same place you did, yours did as far as equipment, like if we do, if something does come up, you know, you have asked for more funds to be spent in that arena, so if we have any extra, it seems to be, but, but I'm certainly not against paying down our material bill either.
Even with spending that, I'm estimating, what, that'd be around four hundred thousand dollars in cash balance, we'll put that around two fifty still. So we'll be rolling into the next year with more than more than we were planning on in a cash balance, which can be transferred into the equipment.
What has it historically?
Budget.
What has it historically taken us to get to, to reserve a collection of stuff?
We, that five hundred thousand dollar transfer that we made last December brought us basically to April. So it takes about six hundred thousand probably to get us to April. At least last year, now that's...
But you made it.
Heavy snowfall.
Decisions on spending at the beginning of last year, too.
Yeah.
You curtailed some spending there, and you waited with some stuff.
Right, yeah, we waited on pants and things. But, um, so that's, yeah. I don't see where it would impact us negatively. Said we're still gonna go into the new year with the six hundred and seventy thousand dollar cash balance, which will, which should, should get us through till April.
That's without the three hundred? Yeah.
Yep. That's, that's my reserve up in the top. So we should be should be okay with that, and then we should still be going into that year with with, um, cash even above and beyond that. Just, just, I, I wouldn't mind trying to kind of tuck some away for future emergencies or equipment purchases. Just kind of try and leave some cash in the cash balance.
Right.
Undesignated.
So we're also talking about assigning some for snow removal.
Right, we could assign it for snow removal, and then as far as that goes, from what I've learned, all you have to do is redesignate it, and we can change it from snow removal to equipment purchases. Or, but it has to be like a specific piece of equipment, right? They like us to say we're working for something in particular.
So have you spoken to Brownlee?
Yeah, yeah. He, he's flexible, he said, oh, it's no big deal, I know you're good for it, and I guess that's... He said, if you, if you want to make a large payment in December, that would be great, if not, don't worry about it, we'll catch some next year. So. But, um, I guess to me, and I figured it'd be at least a three-year payoff plan, if we do this, it would be two. I mean, we'd have it probably paid off next year, I think we'd have about two hundred thousand left to pay him.
Right.
Which, I guess I don't like carrying debt personally, so.
Well, and so, has, will he stick, will he, will we accrue interest on his bill then?
No, he doesn't use finance charges. I mean, maybe we shouldn't give him ideas, but...
No, I mean, and I'm, yeah, he's, which, yeah.
Good that, we're good to work with.
Yeah. He's very easy to work with. So that's an idea. Throw it on you in, in December, of course, but
Yeah.
I've been kind of watching that. Tried to hop on it earlier, like I told Dan, you're looking at October's numbers in November, trying to think about December. Trying to...
Because of the total, so then the total bill's five?
You know, and we haven't gotten a, a bill yet from him.
Yeah, but what you estimated.
But I'm estimating, yeah, five hundred and fourteen thousand, right around there. So if we can get him a payment of three, that would take us down to one and around two, two fifty. Two fifteen, somewhere in there.
Well, that, that file should last us quite a while.
We should be good for quite a, quite a while. The location on it is good for, for trucking as far as stuff goes, um. I was telling, I was talking to Dan, we're intending on working on that Valen Road, three miles to the south off the highway, and then five miles to the north off the highway, or in pretty rough shape after we trucked on it to get everything where it needed to go there. Try and get that back in better shape. And Danforth needs attention, and, so. That will be...
It really sucks that we beat up our roads, we fix our roads.
We beat up our roads, it does, it really does. Makes you feel a little better when you know it's you. At the same time.
Well, uh, so we could approve an amount and then we wouldn't pay it until
Yeah, the end of the year. December budget meeting, probably, can we, or do we sign checks at the end of December?
Yep. So I guess I don't know what we're thinking.
I'd go to just leave it the way it is, it might be until later.
Till we know for sure.
Till we know what's happening, I guess, closer.
Okay.
My thoughts.
Well, if it's that easy to, to make the shift and write something up, I don't know if you're comfortable with waiting that long?
If we know it advanced, then I would probably write up something that would be signed for the record, but technically, we don't need to make a motion. It's a lot easier to explain to the auditor if she comes, if it's on paper.
Well, I'm, I myself am certainly not opposed to paying down that debt, but also we know how many surprises come from the highway target. I've said so many times, fifty, hundred thousand dollar surprises. I'm, I'm in favor of waiting till the end of the year to move the money and pay that bill. If we can do that.
If it's there, we can wait. Do we, okay, do you want to wait till then to do the, any sort of official declarations?
You and I will visit before we get close.
Perfect.
We'll iron that out.
Okay. All right, any other questions on estimates, guess estimates? All right, so...
Actually, one other kind of just thought, with
Yeah.
different realm of dollars maybe, but if you looked at all, about, you've talked before about different software, computers and stuff like that.
Right.
Maybe just put it on the back burner for now.
We keep waiting. Well, I know Chris is, Chris is really comfortable with Ultra. I've had this discussion with her, and I said, before you leave, I want to be transitioned into a new software, and I said, you can do the old software, I'll do the new software, and we'll figure it out together. But, um, so if, if she's comfortable with what we got going on, and, I mean, we can print out whatever reports we need to print out, get whatever numbers we need to get. I'm really hoping, I mean, Ultra does a good job, the more I talk to other counties, I do, I would, wouldn't mind making a change over to like the G-Works, Pub Works, but the more I talk to other counties who have, they're even looking at other software right now, so I've done this before in, uh, my professional life with, with software changes, where you know, you think, oh, this is the next best thing, and you make that leap, and then
It's always changing.
Couple of years down the road, it's like, what, now we're switching to this? So if Ultra is going to be consistent and accurate?
Just curious.
Yeah, no, I, I am keeping my nose up there, and I've got a couple ideas in mind, but if, if we can't get that Ultra update, like I said, by the time Chris decides to leave, we'll, we'll be making a change, but um, okay, then moving on to organize, unorganized township reports. I think you guys have their numbers. As of November twenty-fourth, we had ten thousand five hundred eighty dollars that we have spent in Harrison this year. Our estimate by the end of the year is that we'll have thirty-four thousand in revenues, so we have five years of information, you guys can see that, right? Where, over the last five years, our average expenses in Harrison have been thirty-four thousand dollars a year. So, um, what we're bringing in up there doesn't, it's the average of what we spent over the last five years, which is, I think, partially why they said it that way. Why we said it that way.
The guys are doing a good job, you feel like keeping track of things adequately there.
Yeah, I feel like we're doing a pretty good job, um, we were just up there doing snow removal today and yesterday. The moonshine definitely took a beating with our project up there, so we've been trying to blade that back into good shape and get the washboarding out of it. I know they like their new, their new road. The one O is pretty nice. And that chip seal we put on it has good texture, so nobody should be sliding too far, hopefully, this winter, I know that's always a risk with the water on both sides of the roads that we're worried about, trying to keep that sanded so that we don't have to worry about people sliding off the road in that location. But, um, I do think that they're doing okay, I know I don't know that we're ever going to make everybody happy. But, um, but we, we probably have a couple of spots we should be throwing some gravel down, maybe springtime. But...
Karen?
But other than that, I haven't, I haven't gotten any, any real complaints, so.
So our expenses thus far in twenty-five through the, through eleven twenty-four, how are we so much incredibly lower than what we've done over the previous five years?
Well, that's a very good question.
Did a lot of graveling, I know you said last year, right?
Well, we've done a lot of graveling over the last couple of years. Last year especially because of the truck reroute, we knew that was going to be our traffic detour. And the previous years, I know they were working pretty hard to get everything back up to snuff up there as far as driveways. Also, I'm sure we, we were probably up there grading more saying, doing more maintenance when we had more guys to do it, so.
Would there be any big expenses in December?
We're not anticipating.
I mean, that number's not going to jump, I mean, it'll be
It really shouldn't.
Thousand dollars more or something like that.
Right.
Yeah, well, not doing a very good job of that.
So, no, I guess we're not anticipating it, I tell you what, you really feel cautious saying anything like that, don't you?
Yeah, there's still a lot of December left.
But... But I would, I would like to probably throw a little more gravel on the southern border up there, on Copacabana Road, but but other than that, I think, I think they're sitting pretty good.
Good.
So, and with Doug putting the rest of the, well, that resolution to put the rest of the funds in kind of a... So with Doug putting the rest of the, well, that resolution to put the rest of the funds in kind of a reserve. That will be there for use in the future. I don't know what we can anticipate for snow this year, so.
I, I, I just like to separate it out so we don't want to let on that op out. Be fair to that town.
I agree, I agree. But um, any other Harrison questions?
Don't think so.
Okay, so I am afraid my intention of getting the agreement for the Byron Woodruff contract was not fast enough to get it updated on the agenda link. So what is on the link and what is here is, are different. The one on the link is from last time. This one is current. The payments are set at twenty thousand eighteen dollars and eighty cents. And because January fifteenth was kind of a tricky day to get him a payment by, we changed it to February first. So it was a little easier to keep it in the proper year's budget. Trying to get the check cut on time.
So we are, we're going to negate this agreement that we have with him?
Well, we're not negating, we're going to, we're going to carry this one out, finish it um up until twenty twenty seven. Then we are going to continue twenty twenty eight with the new amount. Yes, so he asked that we just continue making the payments after twenty until twenty thirty two.
There's never been any issues with that one that stayed on there. The way we're doing business with Byron. Up in a topic.
So you need to do that to make sure it's paid or whatever.
So, yes, um, if, this is the agreement contract for payment. I just need you guys to look at that and I got approval from Byron, he did not sign it yet. But um, he said the amount sounds right.
For the new contract.
For the new contract. So it's not going to overwrite the old contract, we're going to fulfill the old contract and then this will carry forward.
So will we really need to address the new contract? Addressable in January? We're not going to pay until February?
My gut says don't do it until he signs.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause if he's not in agreement, then we got to undo it all.
I thought it was like if that's, if, if we're still operating off of this contract for those couple of years yet, so do we need to, we don't need to approve a payment?
We don't need to be in a real hurry, I guess. Nope, that's fine with me, we can do it that way, I'll bring it back.
Yeah, and then we'd have it linked right on the agenda and yeah.
All right, carry that forward. Okay, so um discussing the development of the drainage plant. Sorry to drag it out. But uh, I guess I was kind of asking some questions. Do we do we want to add, like right now on that right of way application? We have um statements of, let's see, I didn't print one out and give it to myself. That the casing will be inside, installed to take the water under the road or the material or the, whatever, it'll be wrapped in casing. We have no drain tile shall outlet into the right of way. We have, it'll comply with the most recently adopted ASA code for gas transmission and distribution type systems, national safety codes. With fiberglass markers along the fence line. And then the utility shall be relocated at the applicant's expense if required for county road maintenance or construction in the future. Do we want to add to that, to those, I guess, requirements, individuals installing the item should register the project with one call. So when they are marking for.
Location services.
Yeah, location services, that, that will be noted in.
Preparing the cost to do it, so.
I don't know about that.
That to have, you have to have someone that's going to locate it. So like if you call in a, one call to do some digging and that's on there, someone has to know or mark it.
Right.
And if it isn't the person that has it, then they have to pay someone to market.
Well, and if, if they have a utility marker sign in the fence line, at the right of way line. Like the landowner should be able to document that themselves if they've done that properly, right?
You have to mark your state, yes.
And if there's a fence there.
You have to like think about in the country. But yes, you're ready.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Is it? Is it not state law to?
Have to register.
To uh locate before you dig, especially right of ways.
Yeah, but if you don't know it's there.
See, and that's just it, it's when it's kind of the, the under the radar.
I mean, I would assume.
Think as the farmer, you'd want to know where it was so they could avoid it.
Yeah.
Assuming. You have to mark it and avoid it, then to fix it after it's broken.
I mean, I guess I wouldn't be against adding it to there, we still probably circle back around to our um original discussion of, you know, this is on a permit application, is it a policy that we have? Or is this just something specific to this permit and, and what's the what's the repercussions for violations and that?
Well, and that's something it wants to say. I mean, anybody operating in the right of way should know to get a permit, right? But I'm assuming there are people that don't, probably.
Yeah, uh, you could bet on it.
If you'd have inquired and done it the right way.
I would say the majority of people do not know that they need a permit for their out.
I, I get that feeling. But, yeah. So, and then as far as so it was, it was pointed out to me that a policy is more of a guideline, we really don't have any repercussions. Or, you know, I, I don't know how that works, I guess legally, what type of.
Policy is typically internal, controlling our behavior.
Our behavior.
And you can't enforce a policy on somebody who's not an employee here.
Yeah.
A resolution doesn't have a consequence, so it almost have to be an ordinance before you can enforce it, if they violate it.
But.
Still has to go back to.
As.
How, how involved do we?
As I read into ordinances, yes, they get very involved.
I mean, yeah.
It doesn't prohibit you from suing them though.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Taking them to court with a criminal complaint.
As far as like the, your right of way permit there, I mean, obviously the repercussion of not doing the things on the permit is that we don't issue the permit and so therefore you would, they wouldn't be able to do the, the work.
Right.
Um.
If they're a legitimate operator.
And yeah, as like, as far as the drainage ordinance goes, I mean, we've discussed it here briefly and I think it was sort of a consensus that we didn't, that was a path we didn't want to
Take.
track down and.
Okay. And then um, as far as, I know something else that came up is the when installing like drainage tile, we, we just kind of want to let people try to be good people and warn their downstream neighbors as far as, I guess, no.
So it's with the law already covers that one anyway.
You have to take.
Lower line, one of them has state water.
Right. And there's a state water board that um landlord is going to appeal to at the state level to uh
Regulate anything.
To, yeah, to, to address some of the issues that come up between landowners, so, right.
So, yeah, and then yeah, Elton recommended we put an indemnity clause on the application, so I will come up with something appropriate hopefully here and do that. I'll run it by him to make sure that it's legit.
Some of that even, I've, I've kind of reconsidered some of that a little bit as we talked about not dumping our right of way.
Yeah.
And then, I don't know, I mean, it, I guess as a drive around in other areas of the state too, you see it quite often. But, you know, if that is like, I guess, the wording people like to use is a blue line, you know?
Right.
If it dumps right into a blue line, I guess to me.
Streams.
I mean, it's.
It's gone.
Where it gets gone, I mean, I don't know that I'd see a problem with that if that's the case. Now, if you got a ditch that goes like this and you're dumping into the ditch, it just sits there, well, that's a problem. To me, but if it has a way, a way, then I guess to me, it's a concern, not realistically. It may be an improvement for that roadway, even if it if that, if that water isn't all just running off, it being directed better, I don't know.
Well, I know like, like the current situation. I'm not sure that there is a blue line for that culvert, like it's not a large enough structure to, to be a blue line. I'm not going to say, I know exactly how long the water will sit there, but there is, that, that whole spot down there is a low spot. I mean, I don't know, I know how many of you have looked at that situation where it's kind of a swamp down in there. Low line area. It's marshy. So they're kind of pulling, looking the water up out of there, aren't they? To, to push it out. Which is going to dry their land up, but it's going to dump that extra into the ditch. And that's.
Yeah, and I mean, we're.
And maybe, I mean, do you guys want to proceed with things and I don't know, see what happens or? I talked with Jason, Jason in Beadle County, Jason Fritzy, and he basically said that they're, they kind of let people do what people do and if it causes a problem, then they'll then they'll talk to them, which I guess was kind of what our conversation was trying to avoid. The begging for his forgiveness or however they've been asking for permission, but.
Like, so many people I think are just going to think, how many people have done stuff and they don't even know, I guess.
Well, I, I guess I'm, and like I said, I don't think we need to go hog wild on it, but from my standpoint, having this right of way um permit seems like a something, so even if somebody doesn't come in and apply for it, if it gets brought to our attention, we say, hey, we have this permit, you should need to come in and apply for it, it has these things, so we can point to those and say, you know, it's not necessarily a, a uh zoning thing or, or ordinance per se, but it's, it's everybody just trying to be good neighbors and
Right.
most, I think, most everybody's not intentionally going to want to just dump water into a ditch and let it sit there, that's going to be a bad issue for them too, so.
So if they dump water into a ditch and it sits there, there, there's probably already water sitting there from the heavy rainfall. And there's also something could find law that when you go to a road, the road can't hold water back.
Right.
So.
Probably needs a culvert anyway.
Water already sits in the road there. That's the way the road was. Is either begin with, I don't know.
Well, and I think the thing is, is if the water, if the water is kind of down in the lower lying and they're pumping it up out of there. Out into the ditch and then it's going down into the, on the other side, it's, it's definitely a little. I don't know, I, I just worry a little bit about the, the road bed, but like you said, it's.
So in a lot of these spots, we've spent years, way before I was around this board. Crushed down for a year.
Firm enough the road base.
So if you're, if you're maybe moving that water that's, where that road's been quote unquote reinforced for that soft road bed. Somewhere else and creating another soft road bed, that creates a problem, but.
Well, and it's kind of like if you're transporting the water from this dish to this dish.
Okay. Great, just get it to where it gets into a creek and it gets gone, then.
Yeah.
I don't know.
We'll see, just kind of, just kind of guesstimation at this point without some sort of a proper, super expensive study. But um, anyway, okay, well, I don't know, you guys have any other questions? Um, proceed with the policy idea and just have the right of way application.
With the uh permit?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Making a policy to apply for a permit and honestly, I feel like there's already something out there for that and that's why all these utility companies do that already. But I'll, I'll dig into it a little more. Um, okay, so, moving on. I got bad news, November, well, middle of November, Stephen Davis was accepted to go work for the DOT, he was hired. So he was done the end of November and so we are down to six. Six crew, six men on the crew, crew members. So far, the plan for plowing is to send each of the guys out in a plow truck, get the paved roads cleared off, then the four crew members that operate blades will go out and blade their usual routes. It worked pretty good this time, I think. I didn't hear too many complaints, I know I've talked to people from the South Valen locations and the North Three Heights locations and and they were like, yeah, it's, they said the roads were passable. Icy as usual, but has to be expected in South Dakota. I guess we'll, we'll proceed with that.
So how, I mean, there, obviously it depends on how much snow we get, but, I mean, how comfortable are you with being able to cover, say, a, a normal winter?
I think, I think like the last couple of winters we've had, I think we'll be okay, I think the guys will be pushing it a little harder than usual, which I, I still think we can handle it. If we need to maybe put in some overtime hours. Uh, we have, I mean, we budgeted for ten, ten employees, so if we need to put in some overtime, we should be able to afford that.
Right. And I wonder, um, I mean, would we entertain like a temp, like a part time if somebody, cause I mean, in the
Right.
egg world, at least for the row crap people, I mean, there's a lot of people that sit around in the winter and they're maybe the, maybe you're looking for some couple of months of work or something like that, I don't know if that would be a possibility.
I was, I was, yeah, I was throwing around the idea, do we want to throw out an ad for seasonal help? Or?
Cause currently we just have a two, or two full time.
Seasonal, yeah, permitted and that's not even in that.
Seasonal, they can't tell.
Right.
Yeah.
On call.
Right. So if we could get some community members to say, hey, yeah, I don't have a whole lot going on this winter, I'll come help.
Get some guys that have retired and are farming and.
Right.
Or aren't snowbirds.
Right.
Right. And I guess I don't know how it would work if, if it is a, I don't know if there's a difference between temporary and seasonal or if it's just somebody can throw their hat in the ring and says, hey, you know, I give me a call if it happens, if it works, it works, if it doesn't, versus having somebody I don't know if paperwork has to be filled out.
For all of our positions, if they're hired as a seasonal or a temporary, it's basically day labor.
Okay.
They're not guaranteed anything, so. I mentioned me, I myself, I thought about Randy too, we've talked about him before, but.
Right.
Randy Peck.
Yeah.
If he could maybe help.
Or even Ty, I mean, there's times.
If they could help out in the, in adverse times, I guess, not that they're just going to hang out over there you know, do whatever, but if
Right.
worse come to worst, and we need some bodies to drive some trucks, I guess, maybe.
Yeah, I want to know for Ty, I mean, if you're sitting at the gate for people to come. Got to be there if they're going to show up, but other than that, I, I don't know.
I would suspect if the weather's that bad, they're not going to show up.
People aren't going to come to the dome.
They would, right.
Right.
Those don't.
But yes.
If you don't plow, plow the road into the dome. If you don't plow, plow the road into the dome, so.
We've gotten off the topic of red action, I will make a motion to accept the resignation of Stephen Davis.
Sorry, yes, we did.
Second. Got a motion in a second to approve the resignation of Stephen Davis. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I just wanted to point out that when Stephen left, he actually thanked the county for the experience. Which we don't see very often. Most time it's just this canned response. Handwritten. I kinda like the fact that he recognized that it was a good opportunity for him.
Yeah.
Good, we're all right on time for 2:30.
Right, look at us. Look at that. And we have Brad.
Okay, I'm, I'm Brad Stanger, and I'm all tech engineers, there's a couple of new faces. So I, so my can, yearly bridge update. I've, I've done a little differently, so this time, rather than poring through all of them, I'm just gonna hit the highlights of what I thought changed from last time to this time. So we, bridges in your county are divided a little more than half one year and a little less than half the other year. So, so this is the off years, there's a slightly fewer that we do this year, and then, so I do them every year, so I'll come every year. So what I got to hand out, I have one bridge that, that I'm going to lower the, that we need to lower the load carrying capacity on. And I just got my handout here, bear with me, I made six. Okay. Which I'll give you the six, but maybe I'll just use one just to kind of go over and, I got one more. There you go, okay. And, um, so the bridge number is 26125, and I got a little bit of a map, trying to denote where that, where that one's at. A little bit about, about this bridge, so this, this, this is, has a, some precast deck units on a, on a vertical abutment, a timber vertical abutment. So what's going on? Deck looks fine, abutment, not so much. This is, this is a common theme with this kind of bridge. We don't build this kind of bridge anymore because the abutments rot away before the rest of it does. And the tall vertical abutments causes problems, and you'll see here, so a little bit of what's going on, we had some ice damage. That's been there a little while, so I, I've been looking at that for, for an inspection cycle or two. But what I got, what we got going on that's a little worse is, is you see some of the, where, where, where I, where I'm trying to denote this from pictures best that I can, but we have some of these where, where the pile is split and cracking, so, and, and some rot at the waterline. And some of that rot at the waterline, you know, that isn't new, however, the water was a little lower this year and I could see it better than the past. So we got this rot at the waterline. That's commonplace where it happens, but what we also have is, is so we have these tall vertical abutments, and then we have the earth load of the roadway pushing in. So our, so our piles are a bit pulling in. And they're getting rotten and going in, so now they're starting to split and crack, which hard to fix. You know, we could go in and put some concrete collars around it, that'll help some. It's good and bad. It helps some, and, but it also covers it up, so I can't tell what's going on until they're shy. So, so that's what's going on with this bridge. So we're gonna lower this one down a bit. I think we, did I say, 1628?
Where is this, Brad? Is it 1626?
It is. I got a map here, right by Randy's.
That's what I was thinking.
Right by Burdette. Right by Burdette.
So we're gonna put the load limit signs up on that, and I'll start watching this one a little more carefully.
What was the loads again? Recommended load limits?
Uh, 260, 125.
Kind of by Burdette.
1628 and 1220.
Northeast.
Yeah, yeah. It's the one we talked about. Yeah, yeah, it's 1628. So, so what that is, is that's 70% of, of illegal load. These, these are, these are hard to do. You know, this, this isn't something that I can crunch numbers on and have some formulas to tell me what to do, cause it's starting to rot. Tough question, how rotten? It's too rotten, and I think we're getting to the point where it's maybe, it's too rotten now, so we'll lower the limit some, try to stretch the life out as long as we can. We, we have a number of bridges already kind of in the works that we're trying to replace. We, we replaced some this summer. We have some more replacements that didn't quite make this summer, and some removals come in and the like. So we're gonna put a big, pretty good dent in it. We were unsuccessful last year with the big grants, which hurt us. It throws us off all year. And we'll come back again with the same, it's kind of, the plan is to come back with the same ones. I guess what I'm getting at is, we have a lot of bridges ahead of this one, so I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at this one, and I'll come back again next year. We'll, we'll look at it, and.
Is this one where a culvert?
No.
Not, not a chance, right?
Well, maybe a big box culvert. Unfortunately, this is kind of, could get, be one of the more expensive ones too. So we'll, we'll look at that. Small bridge, big box. So.
And for those that don't remember, we just replaced the bridge to the south and east of this one a couple years ago.
Yeah. That was a pretty substantial bridge.
I think that was a pretty bad, if I remember right. It was on the truck.
It's a bridge, it's pretty big, yeah. So.
Brad, what was the reason that we couldn't miss the vote on?
It's all score. There wasn't as much money last year as the year before. So where I thought we had very solid scores, where any other year since they started, those scores would have hit, but they didn't fund it at the level that they had in the past, so that basically what the DOT does is we all apply, and they take the highest score and need to start awarding them until they run out of money. And they ran out of money, one above, you guys. So, 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 so that's, I know, that's what happened, I was like, you have to be kidding me, but that's, that's how, how it worked out. So, 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 and we, we got the resolutions in, the, the applications are due, like January 2nd. But I, I plan on having yours in like next week. I like to submit them ahead of time. What that does is it gives me an opportunity, if there's any questions or issues at the DOT, they'll, hey Brad, you, I need this. If you send them in at the deadline, haven't done this yet, but they always say they will, is they'll reject them if they're not complete. So I'd like to do them ahead of time. So I'll get them in. One that's worth noting, one of them that we applied for last year, will apply for this year again, is in, right at Rehites. And right in front of the bridge that we're gonna replace, we're gonna put in a, a precast box culvert, which is nice, you know, they go in and out in weeks, is there's an old bridge with a sidewalk on it. And I just, just so you're automatically prepared, the DOT is gonna make me run the sidewalk up and over the old bridge and back down. Unless I, but I, I guess i- if the city were to remove the bridge, or remove the sidewalk, pass a resolution or something, probably get out of that. But if they don't.
This one, is it just, just east?
It's right in town.
It's east, turn east.
By the park.
Yeah, it's right by, right by the park.
It's full of bones.
Yeah, yeah. It's right by the park, and there's that old, it's not very good kind of bridge with a sidewalk on it. And, and, and that sidewalk, have the bridge and stuff, I think it, I think our box even kind of interferes with it. It has to come out to get our new one in, and if it comes out, and, and I sent it in without the sidewalk and the DOT sent it back and said, hey, if the sidewalk is there, we, we oughta put it back.
Brad, you can't just tell them this in Rehites.
Yeah, I tried that, that's right. Well, you know that sidewalk doesn't go anywhere. And it's, and it's, some of that sidewalk, I suspect is like under the ground, you know, it hasn't been walked on so long, or, or that, you mow your lawn so many times, it just kind of turns to earth and grows over. But that doesn't matter. It's there, they've seen it, they know about it.
Can, can the city agree on the north, is there a resolution?
Rip it out.
We don't, we don't need that.
I don't know about that, but I, but I, I, I did visit with them a bit about it, so I said, you know, these, this, there's not really my sidewalk in Rehites. You have to have it right there, but that, that's, that's the reality is, is, um, I think that if they were to go in ahead of time and rip that out, I can photo document that and say, that sidewalk has been removed and we're not dealing with it, and we don't have to put it back. Otherwise, you know, I'm gonna have to make the box a bit longer, and then I'm gonna have to grade it ADA, acceptable. That's what's gonna get us, guys. ADA rules. You can't have that slope go very high up, and, and, and. So to the east, not a big problem, got plenty ends. There's a ditch there, put a culvert in, run the sidewalk over the ditch at the ADA slope. The other side, there's a driveway right there, so that might be a little sketchy to get. Have not poured in to designing this yet, but we'll have to come up with something there, which, which we'll do, but.
If it really is less travel, I think I would hope they would be really to.
Right.
You just need to come in.
I don't think there's any pushback, and, and if they wanna go that route, send me a little text or email, and I will make, you know, before we go through all this effort, if they wanna go that route and say, yeah, we'll do it, we'll get it out of there. But what'll, what'll happen is, is it's gotta be out of there before we, before I turn in the plans, cause if I turn in the plans and those sidewalks and they. I think they just Google Earthed it, like, what, what's, what's going on? Or I had in my, I think I had in my proposal, well, we're gonna rip this, this other little bridge out. What's that other little bridge? Well, it's this old rickety sidewalk.
Is it, does that one feel likely that it'll be awarded? I mean, that one's.
Yeah, it has a high score.
It's got a pretty high score.
I, I anticipate that we're gonna get these three this year. Cause I think, I think what happened is they cut the money back last year, and we're gonna have a little juiced up. Legislature wasn't super generous this year, so, so, I don't wanna say. I like to think that we'll get through, get them through. However, they weren't super generous, and nobody was. You know, bridges and infrastructure was a high priority, and now it's not as much. And, and that'll turn around, always does, but right now we just. There's a lot of things that I can't control, cause like, we know, we know the score going in, I'll get the, I'll get the applications in on time. A lot of it depends on what kind of competition you have out there, what the other, the other entities that are applying for these bridges. You know, if they have lots of not very expensive ones, then we go further down the list. They toss in a couple Jim River bridges or something like that, you know, you start sucking off six, seven million a pop, it doesn't go very far. We don't go very far down the list, and that's, it's a little bit of what happened to us last year too. So there it is. More follow-on that one. First things first, we don't get a grant, then we don't have to worry about getting the side, dealing with the sidewalk. But if we do, then we'll, one of the two things, we'll have to deal with it.
So we can, we can make changes after the, if they award it, we can.
Oh, yeah, so, so what they'll do is they'll award like, oh, yep, we, we were going to, I, I can put in a cost, I, I put together a big packet of stuff, send it to them, and then they, all they look at is the score. So they look at the score and award it.
They're gonna take the sidewalk out.
Okay, I figured. But, but before they, so let me, let me make double, you know, what I'm getting at is, is before I overpromise that I deliver that we can do this, I gotta go with the DOT and I'm gonna tell them that the sidewalk is scheduled for removal and will be gone. The city does not want it in. And they're gonna, they're going to remove it and then see where that goes. I think that then it's gonna be fine. They weren't, it's their rules, they. Get their money, you gotta follow the rules.
What is your statement, straight from the mayor's?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, Jerry Asker?
Well, we'll need.
Detective.
We'll need some sort of paper trail that I can send to the DOT. And I don't need that to apply, but I'll need that to submit the plans. So first things first, we'll get a, we'll see what happens. We won't know till February.
Brad, maybe I wasn't paying attention. What is this bridge rated at right now, and what's it gonna change?
It is, right now it's legal and it's going down to 70% illegal, which is a single, a single truck is 16 tons, and a combination truck like a semi is 28 tons. And, and, and legal is 24 tons, and then depending on the truck, it's 40 or 46. So it's going down to 70, 70%.
And you think, like a lifespan on this, you'd hope, and the next.
I have seen them go from anywhere from they'll stay like that and for many, many, many years to, you know, a lot of frankly, it depends on the loads.
The winter too, maybe.
Yep.
Yeah.
So once they start rotting, what, what I, what I see sometimes happens is they kind of, they rot, and some of these rot from the inside out. So, and then all at once, what, what that is, is, is there are the round piles, and on top of the round piles, a square cap that these deck units sit on. Most of the time what happens, and then I gotta close it right off, is that pile cap gets crushed, cause timber is real resilient. It can take a tremendous load and bounce back to get crushed, and then it has almost no load carrying capacity then.
Maybe I'm just.
So how many years?
We're over this a little bit.
Between one and 15?
Super simplified in my head.
Yes.
It being it's a deck, when you lift the deck out and just drive some new pile.
So, so, so the answer to that is, is yeah. You're gonna go back to the vertical abutments again. If you do that, if it were me, I would put in steel piles. Steel, what they do is they make them out of steel instead of timber, you got a steel pile, a steel pile cap, and then the back walls are, you use timbers, but a lot of times they use sheet pile back walls. So that is something that, that can be done. I can't get you a grant. The DOT is not on board with.
The deck's probably okay, basically.
Yeah, the, almost all of these, the deck looks real nice. And I, I don't even think, I hardly took a picture of the deck, cause it looks real nice.
You got one from the internet.
Yeah, I just got one, and, you know, it's got a lot of bird's nests on it, but it's, I, I, I didn't, I didn't include it all my, my ratings, but, but. But before you do that, you talk to me too, and we'll make sure that that's something feasible. A lot of times, you get those tall, the lateral loads get hard to deal with, like, you can see on this one, there's bolts going through the piles. Those are tiebacks, so what they do is, there's some sort of pile, usually it's a cable, goes through the pile, put a nut on it, hook the cable to it, and then they run them back, and then they drive some dead man piles behind it and bury them in the road somewhere. That's, that's what's done. I don't know where, you don't have plans, but that's, that's usually what's done. So you got one row of them. It would've helped if they'd have put another row about two-thirds of the way down from the top, but. So sometimes you gotta tie it back, even with the steel ones, because you get so much, when you get the combination of a lateral load and so, lateral load that wants to bend it like this, and an axial load that wants to push down, now it wants to buckle it. So sometimes you, they use those tiebacks so that supports that. The first load pushing here. Okay.
Okay.
That's where we're at. That's your update. That's, that's the changes for this year. Like I say, more, more to follow. What'll happen is, so I'll, I'll, I'll get some grant applications sent in. We'll go in February and then we'll talk again with what we got. Because what happens is you get a grant, you get the award, the DOT will send some paperwork, probably with a call for you guys to sign with agreement saying, I'll do what you need to do to, to conform to the grant rules. Right? Any other questions? I'm here for engineering.
Brad, Brad, his P word wasn't as bad today as he had been.
No, no, no. We're, we're, we're to a point now where, you know, I don't like surprises either. I, I, I hope that the surprises are gone. You know, we've looked at them enough that we're getting out ahead of them. We got some of your worst, you know, a couple of your worst ones done. We should have all the trusses gone here and here. Those are the, and then we'll just keep plugging away a, as they come. And, and all three of them that were applying for a pre-cast box culvert. Oh, I did have one thing to, to this, no decisions now. What I've done in the past, that's, we've been very successful on, is so is the county prepurchases the pre-cast box culvert from the fabricator. And then we've had a contract to install. Purchase of that box is grant eligible, just like everything else. And the, the reason I like to pre-purchase it is, is sometimes that'll knock a whole year off them. Because the normal way is contractor buys the box and puts it in and we pay them. Well, if we pre-purchase it, we might have this thing almost already made before we even have a letting. So when they have a letting, a lot of, many times, the box is done. And then they just, they can come in a couple of months later, or, or I've had one where, you know, you have a letting, commission meeting to award the contract, and three weeks later, we're done. They don't usually go that fast because they schedule and stuff, but two things that are really good about that, one is it cut, you know, it cut it almost a whole year off your time. Plus, contractors will step on that for ten percent. And, and um it opens it up to where you get other contractors, grading type contractors. They don't have to buy a bond to furnish that box. They, they have to buy a bond. The bond costs money. The more money your contract is, the higher your bond is. Some smaller contractors have a cap on their bonding ability. So if we tie up all their bonding ability with this one project, now they can't do other work that requires bonds until they get this one done. But they can't get this one done because the box culvert isn't made yet. So there's other, you get a lot of really competitive bids.
I almost thought it might be different because they're not making money on sale, but.
Yeah, but the bonds are, a lot of them, it's, it's the headache that they avoid with, with all that and upfronting the money and all those things. Okay, now I'm done.
Perfect.
If you don't need me, I'm gonna. Okay, okay, all right. I'm gonna leave. And this one, whoever wants it can have.
I'll take it.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right, so back to next up. We have two more bridges that we can remove as structures. They are removals that are going to happen next spring. Let's see. Get out my handy, handy guide here. Because the O eight M W is.
You're on MW?
Yes.
Got it.
Thirteen miles. Thirteen miles east and ten point six miles north of Miller, three hundred and seventy-third avenue. They have it as by Jeremy Bottom's place. This, so that is going to be removed. And therefore we will not need it on the resolution list or the national bridge inventory list anymore. Right. It is right in the neighborhood. Then, yeah, and I've got those listed on my map over there, those removals. We've got the O eight MV, which is kind of on a section line, eight miles east and nine point nine miles north of Miller on three hundred and sixty-eighth avenue. It's over by Grand Sweeney's, behind Grand Sweeney's place. It's kind of a section line out in the middle of a field. So those are going to be removed, so we do not need to pay to. Yes, yeah, back in the day when you had more farms per area.
How do we, do we easily designate the roads and all that? Maybe they're almost all passable as to begin with, but.
I was gonna say, I, I haven't heard anything about having to make changes. I know there, as far as these removals go, they, they just basically restore the land to its pre-condition, pre-bridge condition. So if somebody wants to put in some form of a crossing, they're gonna have to buy a culvert or put in a low water crossing.
I was thinking about the road itself.
But yeah.
I mean, I assume.
On that road, there's nothing there anymore.
On some of the others, they put up permanent barricades.
There's a few that I know they put up road closed signs.
When they do removals, they will. They'll put up a big sign with the diamonds with the road closed. So if any hunter decides to just go wheeling down the section line, they'll at least know that. They usually have, you know, signs along the way saying road closed ahead or.
I would move to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four. If we do them both at the same time or something, and twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve resolutions twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four and dash twenty-five. Is there any discussion? We'll do a roll call. Palmer.
Aye.
Eshenbaum.
Aye.
Wernsman.
Aye.
Strasburg. Jensen has a knife. Resolution's passed.
And then I had a meeting today, a pre-construction meeting. The, there are two more bridges that are gonna be coming out next, well, spring, beginning of next year. As soon as they can get to it, but the, the one, the O nine A zero, which is one mile east and five point eight miles south of Miller, which is the old Gertis place, kind of down the section line behind their house. And then O nine A one is another one, which is eight miles east and six point two miles north of Miller on three hundred and sixty-eighth avenue, which is kind of a dead end anyway of, in, in a field. Kind of Dennis Simon's land is where it ends. But they're planning on coming in next, like I said, next spring, taking those out. And so that will be coming, that's in the works. The one down south, yeah. I don't know. Did you guys want to talk about, apparently, the, the one down south north of Max Hargens is also on the removal program. And that, that road was grown over with trees and it hadn't been used for years and years and years. And now it sounds like some individuals are planning on building a house down there. They have cleared the area, cleared the road, and they're putting a house in down there. So if, at this point, if we were to stop the grant in the removal process, we would have to pay everything that has been paid so far on that grant. And I'm thinking that's like sixty thousand dollars. Talking, shoot, Brad left. But Brad said, I talked to Brad about it and he said, well, the best thing to do would be to let them come in, fulfill the grant. It's a, it's a local federal. It's, it's free for us. No cost, I should say. And then let the township do with it what they may, put in another culvert or, I'm not quite sure.
You've spoken to the.
I spoke to the individuals that are putting in the house and I spoke to, I should say, I spoke to the landowners. And I spoke to Brad about it. So everybody's aware of what's going on.
How good of a culvert or culverts is it gonna take to take that one?
I am gonna have to take a better look at that. Sorry.
Because if it takes two culverts and we go over twenty feet, it's still our.
It's still our, it's still our bridge, right? I think it just kind of threw us when there hadn't been any activity on that road for so many years and now, now there is. But that, that bridge has been in the grant process for, gosh, I think that was a twenty twenty-three when we put in that application or got accepted. I, I don't know that it's huge. But I'll, I'll definitely go check that out. See what, see what we can see.
We still have Rafe funds, so.
Right, right. The township could possibly get it on the small structure. Well, does there have to be a structure there to be a small structure to replace? That's where grants get a little tricky, just like the having to put in a sidewalk. They get very particular.
That's true. I know. They might come out anyway.
But anyway, all right. And then I got a email the other day about the DOT needing us to fill out paperwork on the O nine L Y, which is the bridge we were just talking about actually. Is on three, three miles south and two point seven miles west of Miller on two hundred and first street is where the bridge location is. They need us to fill out a letting authorization form, a right-of-way certificate, a utility certificate, and an encroachment survey certification. Which they have looked into that and the answers are, are there. We just need to say, yes, we approve. Do you have that form, Dan?
I don't.
Do you need those forms?
What, so, so this is a bridge that Brad has been inspecting?
Yes, it's been on our inspection list.
Every most recent inspection's basically been advised no travel, I would say.
You know, he said if he thought anyone was traveling on him, he would have made them non-trapable. But he did not anticipate that much traffic. So he thought, well, if somebody occasionally needs to pop across to, it's probably okay for the moment. But it would have been a really low, low, low rating. So it was marked at nine ton, yeah, like a single pickup. And these guys are driving across it with equipment. It's kind of scary. But like I said, it was blocked off with trees. You would have never guessed that anybody would be. And he said he knew it was on the removal program, so he wasn't, he was just anticipating it was gonna disappear. Nobody was gonna be too worried about it.
And so with the individual building the house, there's access from the west?
There is access from the west. I think there's kind of a low water crossing from that direction too, or a small culvert. They're, I know they're not too tickled about it, but it, really it kind of falls into the township as far as legally becomes a township issue. I don't know if what.
It's very minimal maintenance.
Yeah, it was.
I don't think it's minimal maintenance if you have to cut down trees to put out.
Yeah, that's why it's very different.
I'm sure it's beautiful.
It'll be until it snows.
If you don't need to get out, then I guess it'd be fun.
I move we approve the signing of the project authorization certificates.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second to approve all of the listed DOT requests. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
There's my list of fun for you today. Any other questions you guys can think of, issues?
Not at the moment.
I know. Well, it's, I don't know. I did, like I said, I talked to the landowners and I, they are aware it's township responsibility now, so.
All right. Can we take that?
Yeah.
Take ten there.
Yeah. Recession for ten minutes.
Running over.
You know, I'm really good at walking behind people that way. And then those other forms. You should feel famous. You have to do all the same.
Uh huh. Which ones now?
The two resolutions.
These two, then we did get inside, so you're done and we shall. That's what we would be on the floor at this point, right? So happy joy. Nothing like a little, I tell you what, grants are really.
Yeah, it wouldn't be so bad if they didn't give us all that money.
Grants? At least make us, I think what they do is make us less liable. I think we do still end up paying about the same. Oh, how's it going, Ren? There's nothing that's signature on these, so I'll just probably throw them in there. How that works. Okay. Need a drink. We'll get some water.
She's not going to get sick of stairs? So what if she does?
Is she the one who listened to us, or what?
Decaf. No, not normally. Well, I don't know if she'd do that. She might be thinking it.
We got rid of this little cabin under, maybe move it to the corner there or something.
Or you push that?
Because nobody goes back there.
No.
Yeah, actually, the goal is to have a new base built for that because it broke and disappeared.
The cabin?
Yep. But I would prefer to see it added to other similar ones. Because they're just sectional, I mean, they can.
Maybe what, I mean, what's the purpose of, it's an old book, so we're never ever going to look at it.
Exactly.
It doesn't need to be here. Another relic for the attic or something?
Yeah, remember it used to be in that corner and it was like six sections tall?
Why, I remember.
It just collected dubs.
Haven't been used as a book and gun piece.
That's exactly right.
Got your pillow ready?
Huh?
Got your pillow ready?
Tell me when you're ready. We're ready.
The good part is, is that a lot of these don't apply to counties, so we can sail right through them. So, section one twenty-seven twelve, state record management program to be established. Commissioner Human Resources Administration shall establish within the organizational structure of the Bureau of Human Resources Administration a record management program which will apply efficient and economical management methods for the creation, utilization, maintenance, retention, preservation, and disposal of records. That has been done, and then we also adopted their, basically, criteria for record management. And so that's why we get to use the record retention manuals that they've created. So then the next one that applies to us is the destruction of non-recorded materials. Any non-record material not included within the definition of records is defined by statute. May be destroyed at any time by the agency in possession of such materials without prior approval of the Commission of Human Resources. And you can substitute commission in your sense in there too. So, like, if I have sixty-six copies of something to get to an original, I don't have to keep those originals. They're just considered work product, draft-type materials, and they can be disposed of without having you take formal action on it. Rules, standards, and procedures. The Commissioner of blah 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 shall program such rules, standards, and procedures as are necessary and proper for the, to effectuate the purposes inclusive. We already did that by adopting their standards on how to deal with records. So we are good to go on that front. And then local record, local records management programs. By adopting their standards, we created our own local records management program. It says the governing board of each county, municipality, township, district authority, or any public corporation or public entity, whether organized or existing under charter or under general law, shall promote and implement the principles of efficient record management for local records. The governing body may, as far as practical, follow the program established for the management of state records, which is what this group did previously. The Commissioner of Human Resources Administration may, upon the request of the governing body, provide advice and assistance in the establishment of local record management programs. So within the website where the state provides all those guidebooks, there's one for the various offices within the county to follow. The State Record Destruction Board shall meet at least once each year and consider requests from all, of all political subdivisions for the destruction of records, authorize their destruction, as in the case of state records. However, the case, in the case of any records recommended to be destroyed, the board shall require a record to be kept of the disposition. We keep those records of destruction by virtue of a resolution that I produce, rather than keeping an index that people can't often navigate or find the records associated with it. It was just as easy to create those resolutions that you have adopted. And the use of common language in public documents. Common language of the state is English, the common language is designated as the language of any official public document or record in any official public meeting. The official indigenous language of the state is the language of the, I can't say those words. The Seventh Council Fire is also known as the Treaty with the Great Sioux Nation, comprised of three dialects, Lakota, Dakota, and Dakota. I'm not aware that we have anything in native language. Any questions on that little segment of statutes? Like I said, a lot of it didn't apply to us, and we were able to skip it. I think the general takeaway is, is that we do follow the state's guidelines for how we handle different records. Okay, so that takes me to my portion of it. I just wanted to bring you some information through the Secure SD program. The website that we currently use is hosted by the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners. It is not compliant security-wise. The reason it's not compliant is, one, it uses the dot org domain, two, it wouldn't take much to hack into it and change the content of our website. So the proposal is that a different company construct her website on a different platform using our handcountiesd.gov domain. This is an allowable expense for the Secure SD program. The state, through the South Dakota Secure SD program, is the one that already screened the applicants, the vendor applicants, and approved the list. One of the closest to us is factor three sixty, which is out of peer. And there is a link to the proposal. Essentially, what it is, is it has a one-time upfront cost of twenty-four hundred dollars and then an annual subscription of three hundred and sixty dollars, which is more than what we pay now, but at least it would have the added security. It also does come with more document storage. Currently, the library for our current website is bulging at the seams, it's full. And we would have more space there. It uses the same platform, which is WordPress, so it wouldn't be very tough for any of us to learn how to use the new website. My request of you today is to proceed with an application to accomplish this, which is to initially do a provisional approval of the proposal from factor three sixty, allowing them to submit it to Secure SD for approval, if you feel so inclined.
So they, they'll pay for the mitigation, we should pay for the setup, and then the yearly fee?
They would pay for the creation of the website, moving our current content, and then we have an annual fee like we do now of three hundred and sixty dollars.
So that's twenty-four hundred dollar.
Hopefully, we would recover that from Secure SD. It's only guaranteed after they say yes, which right now, they're approving them all. I just, in there.
Yep, that's exactly.
And the, and the other thing is, there has to be a more secure site than what we got.
Yes, and most of the.
Why does it have to be secure under security? I mean, I'm just curious.
Some people can't have it and replicate stuff from most illegitimate information posing as us. So like, right now, one of the biggest schemes out there is where you duplicate, like an Amazon front page or you, any vendor, really, any business, and you convince people to go in there and purchase something while not even just giving them your credit card information. So in a day, they can get like forty thousand bogus orders, and then they just spam credit.
It would also allow.
I got a payment purchase right now on ours though.
Would then, would then, she'd be able to get one to pay for her.
She would.
And it would be probably an easier transition to that for the person who's in that website that we currently have.
Right, because they wouldn't have to go to a different website to create the.
It would just be all.
Yeah, the other thing it would do is, if we did have data loaded into the library, it would protect it from disappearing. Right now, somebody could simply just, if they successfully got in there, they'd just clear it all. It would just be powerful for them.
So they provide backnotes?
Yep. And move we apply for the Secure SD.
So what you go with that?
It looks like there. I looked at the county's website and it's very, we're, we're very profoundly.
Makes a lot more sense.
Yes, and they have a useful. I think you.
Yeah, I forgot to put the link from a cook in there, sorry.
So they, they'll migrate all of our current content, or they're just going to set up links?
Well, we're gonna have to tell them, like, there's a lot of stuff that even I put in there when I was in the sheriff's office that really is not relevant anymore, and so we would have to tell them.
Don't need this, don't need that, yeah.
Yeah, I actually, a couple of years ago, I started just getting Google Drive space, and that's where I've been putting all of these documents, because there's no room left in that other library.
Yep.
Well, the total cost, I think it's like, it's definitely twenty-four hundred dollars and then three sixty, we're going to sweep it out.
A year.
That's what.
I think that was the exact number they used. Was able to say that.
And our current fee, what's our current fee though?
Like, two forty a year.
So it's not like, I mean, we're talking dollars.
Right. And the other advantage of this particular group is just their proximity to us, so that if we needed to stop in there and have a conversation with them, we'd have access. Otherwise, you're looking at a two-hour, you know, and not that we can't do it when we're in Sioux Falls for some other reason, but it would be the last thing I'd want to do.
So, but the twenty-four hundred dollars isn't, we can't get that?
That's what the application is for.
Oh.
And right now, according to the guy that runs the program, there are very few people are asking for these funds. And it's disheartening, they're trying to recruit people to do more.
Because the Secure SD, they're automatically paying for the dot gov migration and then just asking for this additional.
Yep, and so the dot gov, not to steer off course, but the reason for the dot gov emails is that it provides end-to-end encryption so long as you're using the dot gov. So if I send an email to Christie on Hotmail, it loses that security. But if I send it to any of you guys, it maintains that security. And that's why we can share things.
And I think dot gov's are free, I think, too.
They are.
Yeah.
Yep. So this would just, I would tell the guy that we're good to go, start the process, see what happens.
Yeah, I guess you had a motion, Jim, second, motion in a second to approve the application of the Secure SD funding. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
As far as the financial reports, because we're so close to the first of the year, we haven't posted receipts onto our side, so I don't have accurate numbers, so I'll have to share those with you. Once that process is all done, so that takes us to the minutes from November fourth, if you would be so inclined to approve those.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda items. Or just the minutes. To approve the minutes. Is any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
And the reports, you have a treasurer's report of property taxes collected, there were no building permits, registered needs financial report, link to the library board's minutes, and then the payroll ledger. As far as the consent agenda goes, there's only one item, which is the payment of bills and claims slash vouchers.
So moved, approved.
Motion in a second to approve the consent agenda items. Is any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, and Will wants to talk to you about an employee he lost.
Well, he didn't lose him. Oh, and before I forget, these were the drawers, did I already bring that up?
No.
Take what you need out of them. If you want it, just store it here, I'll get a basket full of them there. Please, thank you.
If you don't mind, something came up in the last hour I wanted to make you aware of. I spoke with New England Door Enclosure. They, I had sent them one of the closures off the basement door that still worked after a fashion, it was very weak. They can restore it, they can, well, not, well, it would be restore, they can service it. That's the word I'm looking for, and they're doing that. They also told me that they only have two of our closures left, new old stock. And my alarm, I just went ahead and ordered them. The, the cost of that is going to be a little bit more than five hundred dollars, closer to six hundred dollars, so I need your forgiveness on exceeding that spending limit, but those are the last two they have, and they can service the others that we have, so that was actually good news, so sorry about that and thank you. The, Terry has, get turned in her retirement notice. I have given that to Doug. She is, her health is just not to the point that she can do the job anymore. And she wanted me to tell all of you thank you and tell everybody in the building that she'll miss you all, so. That said, she, she will be missed, and so I would ask that you would accept her notice of retirement. And I would also ask permission to advertise for her replacement.
We will make a motion to accept Terry's retirement with commendation for all of her years of hard work. She, we never caught her standing around, she was working all the time.
Yes, sir.
Really appreciate it.
Second.
You have a motion in a second to accept the retirement of Terry Miller. Is any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Wish her well in retirement.
Yes, sir. And I would like to advertise for her replacement and get back to you after we find somebody.
Yep.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
And so that, I don't remember, how many hours was that?
It's, we are budgeted for eighteen hours a week.
Got a motion and a second to prove permission to advertise for the, that open position. Is any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Gentlemen, that's all I have for you. Is there anything you have, any question you have for me?
Don't think so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Will. Well, let me cover one thing. I forgot to tell you that we did have one piece of correspondence that came up over the weekend, which is an update on Chris Howard's feedlot expansion. They're just simply requesting he provide them a little more information, so it wasn't an approval, it was basically just a letter to him saying, answer these questions. As far as the date goes, we normally close the courthouse second floor at noon on the last day, so that we can do our financial stuff. To be honest with you, it'd be pretty tough to close everything out on the 30th. The 29th wouldn't be bad. Governor's already given off the 26th to be a companion with the 25th. So, 23rd, Tuesday?
You said the 29th is too early, or too late?
I just don't know that we can get everything racked up. 23rd works for me.
23rd works for me.
23rd it is. So... Yeah. Well, it's not volleyball season.
Basketball.
Basketball season. Is there a game that night? All right. It's right before Christmas.
What's the date, 23rd?
Did you look already?
Nothing? That's amazing.
I wonder if it isn't there. Time when they can't do stuff.
Oh, moratorium?
Yeah.
What time do you get off? 4:30? Four? Do you wanna do it at 4:30? Earlier, later? Earlier?
I'm good with 4:30, you're right.
4:30?
Well, I got changed time.
Ninety-nine percent of the time, it's very ministerial, and it just involves mostly paying the bills. Okay, I didn't have it on the agenda, because it's, it's kind of ministerial, but I left the book here. It's actually Jamie's book on the TIF. The TIF property has been sold, and a question has arisen whether or not the terms and conditions of the original TIF agreement apply to the new owners. I can't answer that question, I don't know. The other thing that was in the book is that you can request... Pass it around. Is that, well, the commission has always had the option to have them come do a report and report on their financial status as it pertains to this. So this is important, because during the period of the TIF, they're only taxed on the original value of that property, and everything that was done by way of improvement is then returned to them to pay for the improvements that were made to the highway and that road. So the question that was brought up during one of our trainings is, what do you do if they've already paid that debt? Are they still entitled to the benefits of the TIF? The answer is, well, no, common sense would tell you that the project's over, the debt is paid. So I think what my suggestion to you is, is we send them a letter to the new ownership saying, "This TIF existed with the previous owners of that property. You've now acquired this property, we'd like to hear from you." And then you can ask them to produce their financials, what their debt schedule is on those two projects. Basically, anything, but I wanted to bring it to your attention so that you could formulate the questions you want answered, so I could incorporate it into the letter, if you choose to send it. And lastly, the maintenance of that road. There's only one place that I've found where it says that we have any responsibility for that road, and I believe it's a misprint, because it talks about at the end of the TIF, "We shall take over maintenance of the road", which doesn't make any sense, because we've been doing maintenance.
I was gonna say, we've been doing maintenance on that road.
Yes, a lot of things.
Since day one.
So...
We did the widening and all that stuff to begin with.
Yep. Yep, the township road. So I know there's been some discussion about turning that off, you know, ceasing to do that. And if you wanted to serve them a notice saying it, it would be up to them to appeal it and prove that we're required to do it. So ponder that, I'll have it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Is it something we should have a look at?
I think eventually, yes.
I mean, even before we write this letter?
You sure can. I mean, I, I shouldn't assume, but I would think he would have most of that in his office from Jim's records. Or maybe not.
Do you know?
I didn't mean that. He did get advice from the Department of Revenue that since there was a transfer, it wasn't just a bureau, I mean, there was money exchanged between two entities of quite sizable dollars, from when they bought it and sold it. So, we have the right to redo this agreement, or whatever, whatever that be, we do have that right, so. Definitely something that we should look into, because we have plenty more years left.
Yes, thirty-two.
Thirty-two?
Oh, this is 2029. Does it say 29? I don't know, it was a little sticky, nothing said, it was seventeen years, twenty-four.
Jamie, I think that we just had a 29. And I'm pretty sure that the people on holiday, could you repeat, or would you...
Come on! Your jersey's sticking to you.
We have reached out to the Department of Revenue and asked what our rights are with this TIF, since there was a transfer that took place, and we do have the right to look at the terms of our agreement and change that, or nullify it, whatever you guys decide to do between that party. We do have those rights.
So the, so our TIF agreement is with the original people? They sold, the TIF does not automatically go with?
Yes, if you...
It does.
Yeah. Yeah, you gotta read into that, yeah.
As successors.
As successors and all of that, yeah. And, and they have filed paperwork where they will always be known as, kind of like, I will always be known as my maiden name, kind of, if I'm making sense. So they've kind of taken over the ADM name, if I'm making sense.
We still send the checks to the area.
Yes, so. Was that everything you wanted me to say?
So, Jane, so the improvements that they made...
Is that what you're asking?
Well, did they, did they do that under Harold Terminal LLC?
That's part of the unknown on my side of the, I would say.
I would say not, because they, they took ownership last, like, November, so November of 2024. So, I would say that, no, that all of that stuff that you see to the south of the property, the big skyline, I don't, the grand handling system and all, that was added after the transfer took place.
That would be separate from the original TIF.
These are questions that I'm not comfortable answering, Luke, and I would rather...
You need a lawyer to look at it, to find out.
Certainly, I think it would be separate.
No, I just, I mean, I didn't want to answer from him.
No, I'm just not comfortable saying yes or no. I just, there's just a lot of garbage in there, and these TIFs are an anomaly of themselves. So I would just hate to say something that could turn around and bite me, I guess.
So it's immediate.
Yeah.
Because I don't think you're gonna get an answer. But I think it is something that our state attorney needs to look at, to give us some clarification.
I agree. Elton signed it, so he's, has to have it.
He should have a copy.
Well, that's right, it was when he was here. I mean, he signed it as a resident. Yeah, it was 2012, wasn't it? August of 2012.
That seems like a longer, longer...
So, the last item is a personnel discussion in executive session.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to enter executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are in executive session? 3:42?
3:42.